Folks, if I could have your attention please. Everyone, please take a seat, we're about ready to start.
Everyone, come on guys.
We can, yeah.
Okay.
You just run down the list for me.
Yeah.
I'm so glad I'm here.
We're making this all the time.
I don't know.
We're getting real cold too.
I think there's gonna be a lot of hot air pretty soon.
Yeah, pretty soon, I think so, yeah.
Small comfort though.
No, and, and a seat. Come on, get off of the stage.
Look at that.
I know.
You couldn't bring that in the day.
I don't know, who set that up?
I just don't want to move it and have something outside.
Does that mic need to be right there?
We used to have this one on each end.
Well, he's got one in the back a little bit because I think he's got the camera tied into this.
Right, so you don't even need the one in the middle there because if somebody's speaking there, we won't have them on camera. But I didn't want to move it without checking.
I don't see it.
Okay. I've just got a person to the side and just.
I don't know where the janitor's went either. Um, sorry bro.
Yeah, it's okay.
I need a couple more mic not on here.
Okay, folks, we have a quorum. We have a special town meeting posted for 7 o'clock. It's past 7 o'clock, so we're gonna, uh, before we get started, just like everybody to stand and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in visible liberty and justice.
So should, I have to do this before we do this? Yeah, yeah.
Turn it over to our town clerk now, Ann Brody, who will read the recording of the meeting.
Is this on? It is. To Robert J. Kamelowitz, Chief of Police of the Town of Groveland and the County of Essex, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in the special town meeting to meet at the Dr. Alma S. Bagnell School, 253 School Street, on Monday, April 25th, 2016, at 7:00 PM, to vote on the following articles.
And actually, just before we do that, we'll have some introductions. We have our finance committee here, would you like to introduce yourselves?
Mandy Wiles.
Leanne Berry.
Kathleen Delisle.
And there are some openings, so if anybody has some free time on their hands. On this side, we have, we'll start right here with the town clerk.
Ann Brody.
William Hewig, Town Council.
Denise Stomkosky, Finance Director.
William Dunn, Chairman of the POS.
Ed Watson, Board of Selectmen.
Joe Demore.
Some other people in the audience, I, I.
Got a couple more.
Oops, I'm sorry.
I'm here this time.
It used to be three when I was on the board.
Michael Wood, Selectmen.
Daniel McDonald, Selectmen.
Sorry about that. Few other people in the audience, Jackie Sullivan, our Town Accountant, I believe is here. Jackie, yeah, give it. Also, a couple other people, we have, and, whoops, sorry, Karen Kosmas, Business Manager, what are you, vocational, are you Karen? I think it's on the back, Greg LeBrecq, Pennsyltucket Regional Business Manager. Our new building inspector is Sam Joslin, Sam, Sam. And Tom Cusack, our Water Superintendent, Tom. Did I miss anybody? Everybody else, okay. And just again, a couple of things, we have plenty of time, we're not posting until 7:30 for the annual town meeting, so we have plenty of time. Before we begin our actual taking action, the special town meeting, we're gonna have our Board of Selectmen Chairman, Billy Dunn, come up and offer a few words.
I would like to say thank you for everyone coming in tonight and attending. I would like to bring you up to speed on the town projects voted on in prior meetings and some of the hard work the Selectmen have been working on. The first is the bathrooms at the Shanahan Field. I met Sunday morning with Steve Merrill, we went through it, the job came out absolutely great, I'm proud to see that project completed, and I'd like to also thank the committee for their hard work. The historic preservation of the Vito Hand Tub, the town has been working with the architect to finalize the specs before the construction project, it's in the process. The preservation of the entrance to the Riverview Cemetery, the town hired and engineered to put together specifications and requirements on, of the work. We anticipate the phase, we anticipate the next phase going out to bid in the next few weeks. The renovations of the windows at the VC Park, the project has gone out to bid twice, both prices came in much higher than anticipated. As a result, the bids have been rejected and the Conservation Commission will reevaluate the project again. The renovation of the Washington Park, the majority of the project is complete, the new playground was purchased and installed, fencing was repaired, the parking lot was ground leveled and repaid. I personally was there on Saturday for the opening, again, a big thanks to that committee, the project was done in a timely manner, and again, something I'm very proud of as a Selectman and Chair of the Board. Moving on, the Washington Hall has been completed and they had the grand opening in the fall. Again, another well worth project, it took awhile, but it's done and completed, and we all should be proud of that project. Some of the accomplishments of the Board, we have been working with the Finance Director, Denise Stabrowski, very closely, and we were able to get you people a balanced budget, and again, we're proud of that. The Board of Selectmen are looking to sell some town land, and it's kind of something I've been heading up. I want to sell the land and I want to put the money into a rainy day account, so we don't only have a balanced budget, we have a few bucks in the account. We also worked with the Veterans Agent to get him to hold monthly hours in the town hall, that's been taken care of. We gave permission to the Council on Aging to use the land behind the police station to hopefully start a process on getting us a town senior center. We have been, um, we have many other projects as a Board we're working on, and there are too many to talk about tonight. Please remember, we are all here for one purpose, to make Groveland a better place to live. We need to be united as a community, work together for common grounds of Groveland. And thank you. I would like to ask Vice Chair, Ed Watson, to please come up with Joe Demore, and I would like to give Joe a declaration of all his time as a Selectman in the Town of Groveland, and Ed will read it to Joe.
Joe?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Joe.
Okay. Town of Groveland, to honor Joseph R. Demore. Be it resolved this day, April 25th, 2016, the Groveland Board of Selectmen would like to join with the entire Town of Groveland in honoring Joseph R. Demore, to thank him for his dedication and many years of service to the Town of Groveland. Joe has served the town with honor for more than 10 years. Joe began his service to the Town of Groveland on May 7th, 2007, when he was elected to the school committee, and over the last 10 years has been a staple of the community. In 2013, Joe was elected to the Board of Selectmen. Since then, Joe has been involved in so many important decisions affecting the town. In addition to his service to the town, he has also taken great pride in his volunteer efforts in distributing food and resources to those less fortunate. His hard work and dedication to the town, his church, and charitable causes is a true testament of his character and faith. Joe, your undeniable dedication to the Town of Groveland will never be forgotten. On behalf of the Town of Groveland, the employees and residents, we give to you the community's heartfelt thanks and best wishes. We wish, we wish for continued good health and happiness for you, your wife, your Linda, your children, Joseph, Nicholas, Christopher, and Leanna. Signed, Board of Selectmen, William F. Dunn Chairman, Edward H. Watson Vice Chairman, Daniel J. McDonald, and Michael N. Wood. Thank you, Joe. Now, we'll turn it back to the Town Moderator. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, just a couple other housekeeping items, and then we get rolling. Everybody should have a badge, right? A couple of new things this year. If you don't have a badge, you cannot vote, so make sure you have a badge on. And the other, again, request that if there's a seat available, please find a seat, trying to instead of everybody standing up in the back, so if you can find a seat, please find a seat. And the other thing has nothing to do with town meeting, this is to my daughter in Colorado, if you want to give big ups to her and her boyfriend, Tyne and Andrew. Hello. Sorry about that. They can't watch live though, right? It's not live yet. Someday we're gonna be live. All right, so, seats, folks? Any other, any other seats back there? Yeah, go ahead, yep.
Just wanted to have all the people that serve the town, all the Board members, the employees, and everybody that does everything behind the scenes for us, to, could we give them a round of applause and thank them?
Yeah, thank you. Okay. We have two articles, and then we're out of here. No, only kidding. Article 1. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell by any lawful means upon such terms and conditions and for such consideration as Selectmen deem appropriate, the following parcels of town-owned land. I don't think I necessarily need to read all those, you can see there's several of them. So, or take any other action relative thereto. The article's been submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends. Finance Board recommends. So we have a motion and a second for favorable action, is there any discussion?
Again, this is something, as I just stated a minute ago, that I would like to see pass because I believe we can take this land and turn it into, it's been sitting for awhile, we can get the money into our coffers, and we can do better things with it. And again, we have other parcels, we can go at a later date, but I would really would like to see us turn this into something as a positive. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote, so we have a motion and a second for favorable action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? I think that's unanimous. Okay. Article 2. To see if the town will vote to make the following transfers or take any other action relative thereto. Now, there's a whole bunch of these, would you like me to read through them? You want, do we, okay, we have a motion and a second to dispense the reading of the article, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Do you want to take just a few seconds to read them? Are we good, every, yeah? Okay, while we're reading, is there any discussion? Does anybody have any questions? Sorry, thank you. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. Oh, got all flustered with the dispensing the reading. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, uh, aha, end of the article. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends.
Favorable action.
Favorable action, we have a motion and a second. No discussion? We already asked that question, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous. So, thank you. Second, do we have a second?
We have a motion and a second dissolved, special town meeting, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Opposed, say no. Meeting is dissolved. We have eight minutes before we are legally posted to start our annual town meeting. So, I guess we can tell a couple jokes, anybody have a, sing a song? We'll be back in eight minutes. Our Board of Selectmen Chairman has a few more words to say, so we're gonna bring him up, and then he's gonna sing a song.
Well, I must admit, I left a page out of my work that the Finance Director, my secretary, takes care of me all the time, but I wanted to continue on. The Pines Boat Ramp, the planks have been purchased, the boat ramp, the planks have been stored on site, the boat ramp will reconsider, start construction again November 1st. What happened is the sturgeon are in the river, they can't do the project right now, and it's gonna be put off until November 1st. The Rail Trail Project, the Trail Project is in design phase, but has received support from the Mass Department of Transportation, so that means the project now is going into its kind of like its next phase, they kind of got a little bit of a boost from the state, so that should be moving forward. The Bagnell Landscape and Grounds renovation, I have myself with the committee, Denise, the Superintendent of Schools, et cetera, et cetera. The Bagnell project will be starting soon, the summer program will not be affected, the timeline of work will be during the summer, when it won't be affecting the summer program or the school at all. The project will include an irrigation system, renovation to the two ball fields, shade trees for picnic table area, and then we will be seeding and putting new lawns in. The other project is a revitalization of the Pines area, we have been working with the Rec Committee on the project, the first part of the project was to install a well, it went out to bid, but the bids came in too high, and the Rec Committee rejected them, and the specifications are in the process of being rewritten and rebid again, and I think I got them all now. Thank you.
We still have six minutes, so just hang in there.
To Robert J. Kamelowitz, Chief of Police of the Town of Groveland and the County of Essex, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in the annual town meeting to meet at the Dr. Alma S. Bagnell School, 253 School Street, Groveland, Mass, on Monday, April 25th, 2016, at 7:30 PM, to act upon or take any other action relative thereto to the following articles. Also, for those qualified to vote in the annual town election, to meet in their voting precinct town hall, 183 Main Street, Groveland, Mass, on Monday, May 2nd, 2016, between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM, which calls for the election of town officials.
Right. Article 1. See if, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Selectmen to petition the state for any sum available under provisions of Chapter 90, said funds to be apportioned and expended by and under the direction of the State Department of Public Works, Massachusetts Highway Department, in accordance with said statutes, or take any other action relative thereto. The article's been submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends.
Favorable action.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Is it unanimous? Article 2. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the amount of $213,894, and appropriate said sum for Chapter 90 approved roadwork, said amount to be used pending reimbursement by the state, with such work to be done under the supervision of the Road Commissioner, or take any other action relative thereto. Article submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends.
Favorable action.
Motion and a second for favorable action, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article 3. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $900 for the purpose of providing this amount to the William R. Dewhurst Jr., Post 7366, Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, Groveland, Mass, to pay for heat, electricity, and maintaining its meeting place, and any expenses to support this request in fiscal 2016, or take any other action relative thereto. Article submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It says, "No authorization for this appropriations provided in Mass General laws, Chapter 40, Section 9." The Board of, Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. Finance Board recommends.
Favorable action.
Motion and a second for favorable action, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Is it unanimous? Article 2. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the amount of $213,894, and appropriate said sum for Chapter 90 approved roadwork, said amount to be used pending reimbursement by the state, with such work to be done under the supervision of the Road Commissioner, or take any other action relative thereto. Article submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends.
Favorable action.
Motion and a second for favorable action, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article 3. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $900 for the purpose of providing this amount to the William R. Dewhurst Jr., Post 7366, Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, Groveland, Mass, to pay for heat, electricity, and maintaining its meeting place, and any expenses to support this request in fiscal 2016, or take any other action relative thereto. Article submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It says, "No authorization for this appropriations provided in Mass General laws, Chapter 40, Section 9." The Board of, Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. Finance Board recommends.
Favorable action.
Motion and a second for favorable action, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous. Okay, we'll be out here in 10 minutes. Article 4. To see if the town will vote to accept the sum of $35,000 from the Groveland Municipal Electric Department Operation Account to town estimated receipts to reduce the tax rate for the 12 months ending June 30th, 2016, or take any other action relative thereto. Article submitted by the Finance Director. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. Finance Board recommends.
Favorable action.
Motion and a second for favorable action, any discussion? In the back. Yes, thank you. Yes, it's 2017, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous. Okay. Article 5. To see if the town will vote to raise the following sums to freight town charges for the ensuing year ending June 30th, 2017, and make appropriations therefore, or take any action relative thereto. Now, what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna read the numbers, you know, number one, moderator, number two, whatever, salaries, Selectmen, yeah, so I'm just gonna go down, if anybody wants to put a hold on any of those, just say hold, and then we'll come back to them. So, under general government, moderator, Selectmen, Finance Department, Town Accountant, Board of Assessors, Town Council, Technology, Town Clerk, Conservation Commission, Planning, Zoning Board of Appeals, Municipal Buildings, Insurance, okay, heading to public safety, Police Department, Parking Clerk, Fire Department, Inspeckional Services, Emergency Management, Onto Education, Education, Tree Warden, Highway, Rubbish Collection, Cemetery, Board of Health, Council on Aging, Veterans, Library, Debt Service, Unclassified.
Hold.
Okay. So, we've got a handful of holds, we'll go back to the first one, and if my records are right, the first hold was under Selectmen, who wants to talk about that? And I didn't say before, but really, we need to use the microphone, so not only people here, excuse me, can hear us, but people when they watch it at home, on the computer, on TV, so just state your name and have at it.
Valerie Osborne, 3 Pleasant Street. I just wondered about the difference in the Administrative Assistant's salary, requested $18,000 plus, and Selectmen recommends $9,000, and Finance Board recommends $9,000. I wondered if you could explain that?
Who can explain that for us?
So, the Board of Selectmen's Administrative Assistant was combined with the Treasury Collection Clerk position, so by combining the two positions, we added more hours to town hall at a, at a lower salary, so she's still at a full-time salary, but we just shifted the money around to account for her being in two different offices.
Any other questions under the Selectmen heading? Okay, so we're good with that? Okay, the next one that I have is Town Clerk, who wanted to speak about that?
Under poll, Justin Gordon, what's that? Under poll workers, it goes from $950 to $3,400, can you explain why you need $3,400 for poll workers?
Go ahead.
There are actually several elections in the next fiscal year, we have primaries, presidential elections, so the actual cost may be more than that $3,400, but that's what we're estimating at this point, due to the number of elections. Contact the Clerk in November.
All right, so we okay with that? Thank you, okay. Next one is under Planning. Who wanted to talk about that?
Betsy Latham, 23 Briscoe Road. We have money in there for a town planner, which is new, and I just want to understand whether that is intended to be a permanent position, a consulting position, what, what people were looking for there. Number one, it's not recommended at this point, but I can say, moving forward, I personally think it's getting to be the time where the Town of Groveland does need a town planner. There's a lot of planning that needs to go on to some of these projects, I can personally tell you, I know there's a lot of litigation on some of these projects, that the litigation wouldn't be where we are right now, if we had a full-time planner, working with our building inspector, working with the conservation, working with some of these other departments, and I think that we need to really take a good hard look at it this next coming year, and it will be one of my roles, and I just think that the town has got to the size where it is now, it needs to run a little smoothly, and that's where we were looking, and we tabled it for the time being, but we will be taking a better look at it, and I'll make sure that we have town, it gets, you know, gets their hearsay in it, or we'll have some forums on it, or whatever, but that's where we're heading now. Thank you.
And just to clarify, I didn't say that when we started, the amount that we're gonna vote, once we get to the end here, unless any of the numbers are amended, is under what, where it says Finance Board recommends. The next hold was under Municipal Buildings. Somebody want to speak about that? No, did I miss that, or is that, no, okay. We okay with that? Yeah? Okay. And then, just that last one, Unclassified? And then, I believe the last one is under Unclassified. Who's gonna speak about that?
I will.
Oh.
All right.
Go ahead.
Yeah. The original budget that the Selectmen came forward with was for the additional $85,000 to fund the OPEB, which is the. to fund the OPEB, which is the unfunded liability that we're facing going forward. And what that amounts to is all our retirees that have retired and are in retirement still, and all the future retirees that will retire from the town, we have an obligation to make sure we have funds for them. And by just paying the ongoing expense every year, which is our, um, it's up further, and I can't tell you the exact amount, we're looking up, but that's fine, but we're still developing this liability going forward. It's a new initiative by the government that expects us to start funding that. Last year, we voted on a fund, it's called a trust fund, to start funding this for future needs, so we don't get caught short. And the Finance Committee thought that this should have been entered in a different fashion, but we since learned that the $85,000 could be included in the Somnibus operation budget, and it will then go to the trust fund that the town meeting approved last year. So, all we're asking for is to amend the Finance Committee's recommendation to include the $85,000, which will in turn change the subtotal and the total in that column to match that that's listed under the selectmen.
So, would you like to make a motion to amend that figure to include the $85,000? Do we have a second for that? Okay. So, we're going to, what we're going to do right now is just vote on this amended number. We're not voting on all the other numbers. We're just voting to see if this could be $85,000. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay. So, all those in favor of the motion to amend this to include the $85,000, say aye. Opposed, say no. Okay, it's unanimous. And that was the last one, right? Okay. So, now what we need to do is just vote Article five as amended. So, I didn't read the recommendations, so. Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. Finance Board recommends?
Favorable as amended.
So, would somebody like to make a motion to approve Article five as amended? Do we have a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Unanimous. Okay. Article six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $886,533 for the use of the Water Department, said sum to be offset by fiscal year 2017 Water Department revenue, or take any other action relative thereto. You can see all the expenses that are listed. The article was submitted by the Water and Sewer Commissioners. The Water Sewer Commissioners recommend favorable action. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends?
A little bit of concern. The article's written for the figure that was requested, and the Finance Board is recommending the $885,271 figure, and we are actually voting on the Finance Committee's recommendation.
We are. So, what, okay. So, your recommendation is in the far right-hand column there for favorable action. Okay. So, just to get the ball rolling here, does somebody want to make a motion for, on this, as the Finance Board recommends? Do we have a second? Okay. All right. He made a motion for favorable action under the requested amount, again, which is slightly higher than the Finance Board recommends. So, we have a motion and a second, so now we get to have our discussion. Who, any discussion? Does?
So, the Board of Selectmen, the reason we voted the way we are is we are not supporting the salary. So, that's the difference.
Okay. I say that, I'm not sure, the sal, just say that once more?
We are not supporting the salary on the superintendent.
Okay. Thank you.
I would actually, would just like to add this. It's the Finance Committee that doesn't support the salary increase that was proposed. Okay? That's where our number comes from.
Okay.
Superintendent's salary was lowered by us, and the reason it was lowered was because other town employees got a certain percentage increase. The requested for the superintendents was higher than that. We felt that would it only be fair if the percentage increase would be the same for all our employees? That's why we changed that.
Further discussion?
Jim Sheehan, Rivers Edge, Water and Sewer Commissioner. This is the second part of something which we started last year. It is above the 2% you gave the rest of our town employees with exception of contracted our union help. We understand it's 2% over whatever the guy else got. We feel that he strongly deserves it. I know that even if you people passed it tonight, I still have to get by the Board of Selectmen with it. It's their call. We'd appreciate your support. We'd like you to move the question for the requested amount.
All right. Let's take a vote. Hang on just a second.
Mr. Moderator, through you and to Town Meeting. The two numbers, $65,589 under the fiscal '17 requested salary amount for the superintendent as opposed to the $64,327. What I think Town Meeting should know is that the selectmen determine the superintendent's salary, and the selectmen have already said they'll only vote for the $64. So, even though Town Meeting may vote to authorize salary in the amount of $65,589, the superintendent, because the selectmen set his salary, will only get a salary of $64,000 anyway.
Yeah, but Bill, correct me if I'm not wrong, if we pass it here tonight, we could still go back to the Board of Selectmen and discuss that. Is that correct?
Mr. Moderator, through you in response to the question for the floor. That's correct. The Board of Selectmen set the salary. They can always agree to raise it up to the amount authorized by Town Meeting. Up to that $65,000 amount. They could do that, yes.
We'd like your support and we'd like another chance to talk to the Board of Selectmen about it. That's all we're asking to do here.
Any further discussion? Down the end.
Daniel McDonald. There, you know, the issue here for me is that there are a lot of people deserving of raises in excess of 2%. The problem we have is limited funds, and we have tax, property taxes that we need to be cognizant of. And for that reason, I've, you know, stuck with 2%, you know, in terms of keeping that across the board. Certainly, there are people well deserving and may not have received raises in the past that they should have, but, you know, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. If we give out 4% or 5% or a different rate to someone else, then, you know, that's a slippery slope, and then maybe the appearance of favoring department heads over rank-and-file employees. So, for that reason, I'm not saying you're not deserving. You probably, probably are, well, and above, but the issue is fiscal responsibility, and we're living with our means. It's a public service. That's all.
And as much as I, as much as I agree with you with that, and I do wholeheartedly, it comes out of the rate structure of the Water Department, not out of the tax levy that the town collects. It's, we have one of the lowest water rates in the area. He does a great job. We'd like to support, have the town appropriate and raise that sum, and come back to you and discuss it one more time. That's all we're asking for.
I understand, but the people want to fix.
Okay. Yeah. Anything new to offer to the discussion? Then let's take a vote. So, we have a motion and a second for favorable action under the FY '17 requested amount that totals $886,533. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Can try one more time. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. I think the noes have it. Sounds louder to me, but it's close enough that I think it might be prudent just to do a quick hand count here. So, we have a couple people to help. So, what I'm going to ask, all of us in favor, raise your hand, and we're going to count them. Okay. All those opposed, raise your hand. Okay. It was 82 against 77,4, so the motion does not carry. And we need to take some action, though, here, or the Water Department has no budget. So, would somebody else like to offer up a motion? Do you have a second? Any further discussion? Motion and second for the Finance Board recommended figure of $885,271. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It passes majority. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $531,111 for the use of the Sewer Department, said sum to be offset by the FY 2017 Sewer Department revenue, or take any other action relative thereto. And I'll just, again, the Finance Board recommends is the right-hand column, so we'll start with that. And that's the column that the Board of Selectmen had been recommending on. So, the Water Sewer Commissioners recommend favorable action. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends?
Favorable as to the Finance Board's recommendation.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Motion and second to move the Finance Board recommended figure of $530,571. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elective and appointed officers of the town for the 12 months ending June 30, 2017. Fixing the salaries according to Articles five through seven above, or take any other action relative thereto. Articles submitted by the Finance Board. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends?
Favorable action.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $195,000 from the overlay surplus account for the purpose of funding the town's operating budget for fiscal year '17, or take any other action relative thereto. Articles submitted by the Finance Director. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends?
Favorable action.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $120,648 from fiscal year 2015 town free cash for the purpose of funding the town's operating budget for fiscal year '17, or take any other action relative thereto. Articles submitted by Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends?
Favorable action.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action. Any discussion?
Justin Gordon Wolf Drive. I didn't take any finance courses in college, but can someone please explain to me where town free cash comes from?
Hopefully, someone can, yes.
Nothing's free. It's taxpayer money. Hot-earned money for most. So, it's basically unappropriated or unrestricted funds the state certifies, and then it's up to us as to we want to, you know, move that money to the rainy day fund, or where we want to pocket. So, basically, that's it. It's extra money, but it needs to end up somewhere on a budget. So, $120,000 of it, it's going to go to, uh... It's going to go where this article says if you vote for it, and there's some other free cash that we've put on this, on an article to move it somewhere else. So, does that answer the question? Or you want a more eloquent answer from our Finance Director?
If you've got a question, please go to the mic. Any further questions? No? Okay. Then let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to transfer $300,000 from fiscal year 2015 town free cash to the stabilization fund, account number, you can see all those numbers there, or take any other action relative thereto. Articles submitted by Finance Director, and this will require a two-third vote if it, in order for it to pass. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends?
Favorable action.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action. Any discussion?
Justin Gordon Wolf Drive. Okay, you taught me all about free cash. What is a stabilization fund? And I see that word, phrase, named in a whole bunch of other articles we're going to talk about tonight. So, I get the impression that there's more than one in this town, and if so, who has them, and how much are in them, and what are they used for?
Who wants to answer that?
I'm going to go with this one, too. How am I doing? Stabilization is just what it says. It's effectively a rainy day Tuesday type of fund, where if you get in a, you know, fiscal jam, the people of Groveland can get together on a special town meeting or a town meeting and appropriate that fund, those funds to what is needed at the moment if there's a crisis. Typically, I'll throw this out there, you know, we would like to see our savings account up to maybe 10% of the budget. I mean, that's just my personal take on it. So, we're going to put this money in savings. So, a savings account is a good thing where I come from. We're going to salt it away.
And to answer what you just said, we got $600,000 from, back from the Department, the DOR, and right now, in our stabilization account, we have $743,000 roughly. So, that would be our rainy day account. Does that answer your question?
I'd just like to mention, a few years ago, most of you come to, oh, sorry, most of you come to all these annual meetings, so you're probably familiar with voting to transfer out of stabilization $500,000 to cover the lawsuit that Haverhill had against us for the landfill. If we hadn't had that money in stabilization, we would have been in trouble, because we wouldn't have been able to, we'd have to raise it that year. wouldn't have been able to, we'd have to raise it that year in tax levy, and it would have been very difficult to do. So that's the kind of thing that we have that money for, that unforeseen, large, large expense. And since we're voting a two-thirds majority in order to put it into stabilization, we also have to vote a two-thirds majority to pull it out. And that's why that money is there, for those major things. And the state does recommend a ten percent of our budget figure.
But I also noticed a lot of these other departments also have quote-unquote stabilization funds. What kind of money is in these funds, in these stabilization funds? For what departments?
So there are no other stabilization accounts. We're asking tonight to create a capital stabilization specifically for capital projects, that we would put money aside each year, and then when a large purchase comes up, we would put some money specifically for capital items. But currently, we only have the one stabilization account.
We just voted on, thank you. We just voted on the Water and Sewer Department's budget. They also carry and get certified free cash from the state, which is saved in a separate account. So there are some, there's that one. I don't know if there's any others, but that one comes to mind right away.
Okay, any further questions? Further discussion? Let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to establish a special-purpose stabilization fund to be known as the Capital Stabilization Fund, which fund shall be used for the purpose of funding any capital-related project, or the purchase or acquisition of capital equipment, or payment of debt service related thereto, as authorized by Mass. General Law, as Chapter forty, Section five B, as amended, and for that purpose to transfer seventy-five thousand dollars from fiscal year two thousand and fifteen town-free cash into said account, or take any other action relative thereto. So article submitted by the Finance Director. Once again, it requires a two-thirds vote to pass. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable. Finance Board recommends...
Favorable.
Motion and a second for favorable action. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just think that this is an important topic, because what we're currently going through on some of our capital improvements, the fire truck, et cetera, et cetera, I think it's time that the town starts to put money into an account and build the account. So when we have big purchases like this, we can get it purchased and purchase the right way. So I definitely think this is an important vote. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Last year, Justin Gordon Wolf Drive. Last year, one of the big funds available to do a lot of things, like purchasing property six times its value, was a CPA fund or something like that? Is that correct? Is that the right name? How does the CPA fund not relate or relate to these stabilization funds? And can that money be used in lieu of these stabilization funds?
No, so community preservation money can only be used on specific purposes. Capital items are usually not considered community preservation. Things like revitalization, historic preservation, open space, recreation, community housing, things like that, not capital items. So stabilization is authorized two-thirds by this board. Community preservation is part of your taxes. So every tax bill you pay, a portion of that goes into a community preservation account, which is then appropriated out by this group on a recommendation by the Community Preservation
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second for favorable action. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous. Passes. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate one million, five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of financing new water mains located on Main Street from Washington Street to Gardner Street, then Gardner Street to School Street, and related improvements, including without limitation all costs thereof. That to meet this appropriation, the Finance Director with approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow one million, five hundred thousand dollars and issue bonds or notes there for, under General Law, as Chapter forty-four, Section eight. That such bonds or notes shall be general obligation of the town unless the Finance Director with the approval of the Board of Selectmen determines that they should be issued as limited obligations, and may be secured by local systems revenues, and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project. Article submitted by Water and Sewer Commissioners, again, requires a two-thirds vote. The Water and Sewer Commissioners recommend favorable action. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends...
Unfavorable action.
Unfavorable action. We have a motion and a second for favorable action. I imagine there's going to be a little discussion. Who would like to speak?
Justin Gordon Wolf Drive. One, I'd like to know why the Finance Board calls it unfavorable? And I have another question. Should I wait for Finance Board first, or should I go on with my second question?
Yeah, go ahead. Throw it out there, and then we'll...
All right. The Selectman said there is no other stabilization funds in the town that she knew of, or they know of. Finance Committee said the Water Sewer Department had a stabilization fund that apparently the select woman didn't know of. Does the Water Department have a stabilization fund? And if so, how much is in it? And if there's a lot of money in it, why aren't they using that for this million five?
Okay, so let's take the first question.
Okay. The reason the Finance Committee did vote unfavorable was for that very reason, because there is funds in their stabilization, and we think that at least some of that money should be used for this purpose.
Do we have an answer to the second question?
I just want to clarify. They do not have a stabilization. They have retained earnings that are certified similar to our free cash. So they could appropriate their retained earnings, such as we have appropriated free cash, but they do not have a stabilization account. I just want to clarify that. Retained earnings, they received about three hundred thousand in retained earnings for fiscal fifteen.
You done? Okay. Yeah, over here.
First of all, we thought we had support of the Finance Committee when we were at that meeting, but apparently, things changed between here and town meeting. However, we do have three hundred thousand. It's a million, it's a million five for the project. To put our excess three hundred thousand into a million and a half project, we know we have a ledge on Gardner Street. There are contingencies you need to keep within your budget. It's something that we should keep. In the past, we've taken our returned savings and put them into many projects. Off the top of my head, the last water tower, we put three hundred and twenty thousand dollars of our free cash into that project. We will with this if it meets budget and comes in, certainly under budget. But to spend that money before or with that project is not good spending.
Further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Without that new three hundred thousand dollars coming in, based on two thousand and fifteen retained earnings, what was the balance prior to that? We were told it was over two hundred thousand.
It was, I believe, our last year's budget, going from memory, but I think it was one hundred and nineteen. So that would be incorrect. Year prior to that, I mean, it moves depending upon what we spend our money on, and reinvest it back into rates, projects, whatever. But we thought we had your support prior to town meeting, but spending that three hundred thousand dollars and lowering that to one point two million is not good business. There are contingencies. It's construction, it's underground. The main is, was put in in nineteen forty. It's fed from our highest-producing well. It's had several breaks in the past three years. It's time. We need our support. We need to replace it.
Okay, over here.
Once in a, every twenty, thirty, or more year, something really big comes across the ticket. And I support, and I believe that the board obviously supports the Water Commission. We have to build some significant infrastructure. We've got aging pipes over a hundred years old. So this is a project that has to occur. We have to pay for it. That's going to impact ultimately our water rates approximately over several years that the project be pursued will result in approximately twenty-five percent increase in our, what we pay for rates. But on this issue of three hundred thousand dollars, keep in mind that what James is telling us here is that they have one point two million dollars of current projects, correct, going on right now. And if something goes wrong, that's what he means by contingency, where are they going to get the money? Three hundred thousand is actually on the low end to back up that amount of current projects if something goes wrong. The Finance Committee reminded us of what happened just a few years ago, when to settle some litigation, we needed to come up with a half a million dollars. We had a rainy day fund to do that. These guys have their own rainy day fund. I say, and this board has voted, to say, leave it alone, and don't use it towards the infrastructure project. I hope that that's clear.
Anything new, Ted?
Yes, we have free cash, we have stabilization funds, we have, now we have retaining funds, that's a new one. Are there any other funds within the Water Department that they have that they could be dipping into?
Can you answer that, Jim?
Yeah, there is, there is no other one.
Okay, thank you.
You get certified by D O I, the same way the town does. Just by the Board of Selectmen, it's the same process. There is no difference. We need contingencies for the project, and frankly, for our budget. Spend it all at this point, or put it all into it, it's a nice idea, but let's get the project done first, see where we end up financially, and see what the budget looks like when we're done.
Okay. Thank you. I think behind you.
Mike Houghton, One Valley Farm. My question is, it's a little bit of confusion. The article's written such that it shall be a general obligation to the town. A G O bond is one that every taxpayer pays for? It's a loan, right, that we pay for? Joe mentioned that this would be borne by the ratepayers, not by the general town. Can we get some clarification on what's the intention?
So general obligation is just the type of bond that we would purchase. It's still funded by the Water and Sewer Rates. It's not coming out of the general fund. It's just a general obligation bond. It's just a terminology.
So it's a G O bond intended just for, borne by the ratepayers?
Correct, under the Water and Sewer Department, yes.
Thank you.
Bill?
I can tell you that this year alone, that the Selectmen's office has been inundated with calls on rusty water. We had a big, big problem up behind in the pines complaining about rusty water. I truly think it's time that we start to invest in our infrastructure, and one of the things would be starting with this water. I think it's going to be a well-worth project. It's going to hurt us a little bit in the beginning, and again, it's going to come out of the water rates, but we got to start working on this project. Our pipes in this town have not been touched in a long time, as Jim just stated, and like I said, I think it's a well-worth project. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. So we have a motion and a second for favorable action. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
It's the two-thirds majority. Okay. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer fifty thousand dollars from fiscal year two thousand and fifteen water enterprise retained earnings for the purpose of funding to replace water mains and related infrastructure on Governors Road, or take any other action relative thereto. Article submitted by Water and Sewer Commissioners. Water and Sewer Commissioners recommend favorable action. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends... We have a motion and a second for favorable action. Any discussion?
Mike Lawless, Nine Governors Road. I just had a quick question. I thought this was already approved, ready to go. I believe the work is going to be started soon, but it was approved some time ago. Why the increase of fifty thousand dollars?
Can someone answer that for us?
So this is really a formality. It was on last year's town meeting warrant, and because it hasn't taken place, they were afraid if they didn't revote it for next year, the money would go away. So they just want to make sure that fifty thousand stays on the Governors Road project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Passes. Okay, article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer the necessary funds for the following projects from fiscal year two thousand and fifteen town-free cash, or take any other action relative thereto. So we have a purpose. Fire Department portable radios, Highway Department one-ton truck, Assembly Department utility vehicle, Police Department replacement line cruiser. Each item above will be considered a separate appropriation. The budget amount may be spent only for the stated purposes. Article has been submitted by the Capital Improvement Committee. So we have a purpose, and then funding sources. Comment, the above projects were recommended for funding in FY two thousand and seventeen by the Capital Improvement Committee. Refer to Appendix A for the complete five-year Capital Improvement Committee report. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends...
Question. Favorable. I have a question.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, discussion?
Yes. What are we voting for? Two hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three, or a hundred and sixty-seven, nine seventy-three?
Yeah, I have a question.
The motion was for two oh nine, nine seventy-three? Okay. The motion, second, for two oh nine, nine seventy-three. Go ahead. Over here.
So that's the, that's what's being voted on, is two oh nine, nine seventy-three?
That was the motion, yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? No? Okay.
I would... Did somebody say? The Board of Selectmen... I can say that the Board does not have enough free cash to cover it...
Okay.
...to support it. So the, that's why we did what we did.
Mr. Moderator? Yep. I do have a comment.
I'll just finish. Also, when we had the discussions with the fire chief, we had come to the determination that not all the radios were needed in a one-year lump sum, so the board discussed it, and we also dropped the number to the forty thousand, giving them part of the radios, not all of them at one shot. And we felt the radios that we gave them, we thought they were the ones that were the most important ones for the men to hold and what have you. So that's where we went with that.
Okay. Just for some background explanation, the purchase of the portable radios that was recommended by the Capital Improvement Committee, and by the way, Jeff Pappas, Thirty-Fourth Senate Street, Chair of Capital Improvement, was for the replacement of the portable radios, which is the first phase of a two-phase upgrade for the radio system for the fire department, second of which is scheduled for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, which is an upgrade of the radio infrastructure, which is also needed. So the questions that I had were, what was the rationale for reducing the amount to forty thousand dollars, which Mr. Chairman just explained? So my second question is, if they're only going to be purchasing approximately half of the radios at this point, what is your plan for the purchase of the remainder of the radios as part of the total upgrade?
Well, as a board, we'll discuss it in a further meeting, but I mean, we're obviously going to give the fight upon what they need to make them safe. Right now, this is how we had voted. And I also believe that, I don't want to put the chief on the spot, but I think we had him into one of our meetings, and we discussed it, and I believe that we kind of came to this agreement.
Okay. So the purchase of the second half is going to be taken up at a later time?
Go ahead.
You put me on the spot.
Yeah.
Okay. Robert Ley, Fire Chief. I did meet with the Selectmen on this issue, and I put it in their hands. We need them all. We need eighty-two thousand dollars worth of radios, this time. I told them they could buy one, could buy thirty-five, they could buy all the radios. They opted for forty-two thousand dollars worth. I understand we don't have the free cash. Turn back a page. Article twelve, you just had seventy-five thousand dollars of free cash. If you go back another article, you just had a hundred and, you just had three hundred and eleven, and you had a hundred and twenty and ten. I don't know about you, but my math comes up with four thirty and seventy-five, close to a half a million dollars in free cash. You just moved somewhere else, and now we're hearing that we didn't have any money to buy these radios. So...
Well, I will defend the board.
Hang on. Hold on. Let me... Hold on. This is through me. Are you finished speaking?
No, I wasn't.
Keep going.
So the question that I have, and maybe the statement that I make is, again, it's all public safety. It's all firefighter safety. You didn't want to buy them. I'm okay with that. But I think the question from Jeff's perspective was, when?
Okay.
When? You know, next year, we show up, and you say, ah, we're putting more money... You know, next year we show up, you say, ah, we're putting more money away, we don't have any money this time. This is about firefighter safety. That's all it is, very plain and simple. So, I'd just like to get it out there. I think this is the right forum to get it out there. They're necessary, they're needed. It's not that we wanted them. And I think it's important for everybody to understand that difference.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. At the time, the free cash was not, it was not appropriated for us at that time when we'd had this discussion. And again, I can say, I'm not going to bait the Selectmen in the fight upon them. This is not what it's about. I'm here to make everyone safe. I'm trying to get a balanced budget and keep a balanced budget. So, I know Joe Demore would like to say something. Again, I know the chief was at our meeting, but he stated it was true. The board did agree on lowering the number and what have you. So, I'll let Joe talk.
Through the moderator. The, the purchase of the number of radios that we decided on was literally negotiated with the chief. And the concession that the chief made, and if you check the minutes and you check the tape, says that the men were not in danger if we bought the amount that we decided on. We're very proud of the fact that we worked with the chief on that issue. It's a critical issue because there isn't anybody in this room that wants the men to be unsafe. So, we settled on that. And Jeff, no one's answering your question ultimately. We expect the chief, the fire department, to present the budget, their needs, next year for additional radios. Thank you.
Over here.
Don Gruney. I believe we've gone through this before. You know, at a meeting, we were buying some air packs, or we weren't going to buy some air packs, but the bottom line was, we had to buy the air packs. Now, we've got a situation where we have roughly thirty-five men and women on the fire department, and who's to say which one shouldn't be safe when they go into the fire? Now, say somebody shows up to the fire call that doesn't have a radio. So, now they have to stay outside because they have to wait for somebody to come with a radio to go in and save somebody? Come on.
All right, well, I would like to just simply say that with the forty thousand dollars, I was told that we have roughly thirty-five firemen, and I said that I want to make sure every fireman has a radio on them. So, in this budget, I'm pretty damn sure that every man will have a radio. So, I'm not going to turn around and harm anyone. So, I'm making sure, we talked about it, we did the number, the dollar amount, so we're not going to put anyone in harm's way.
Down the end, Dan.
My understanding, and I was at the meeting, that the chief was there, every fireman would get a new radio. It was the radios in the trucks that would be deferred, and I believe that the chief believed that they could wait. Eventually, they need to be replaced, but it was not an imminent urgent emergency. So, it's false to say that we don't support every fireman at the fire, and no one's going to be waiting outside with a fire. In fact, I asked the chief, I quizzed the chief, I asked a lot of questions. I thought maybe you could buy radios and stick them on the truck, and you show up to the fire, you grab a radio, and you're in the fire. He told me, it doesn't work that way. You take the radio home with you, and you're on-call twenty-four-seven, and if you get called, you get called. So, that's what I was told. I made my decision based upon that. There isn't one fireman in Groveland that will not have a brand-new radio, and they can be added. One, you can buy, it can alacad it, they're programmable, and there was the trucks that were going to be deferred. So, that's, those are the facts, folks. It's, it's on camera, run the tapes.
Over here.
Michael Pifferling, Hillview Drive. I just wanted to know how many radios forty thousand dollars will buy, and how many men were on the fire department, men and women, I'm sorry, on the fire department?
I don't want to speak on behalf of the chief, but I believe there's thirty-five men on the department. Am I correct, chief?
Yes, the calculation was for thirty-five. There's two ways to get at this. One is, NFPA requires a radio for every riding position, so that's every seat in every truck if you add it up, that's like in the thirties, and we have thirty-five men. So, it was a trade-off. We go with, every firefighter gets a portable radio. That's the NIOSH recommendation, so every person on the fire ground has a radio. What we did agree to defer were truck radios. My question and my comment earlier was, we didn't have the money two weeks ago, now we're putting the money away. And I'm good, I'm just teeing this up for next year, we squirrel some money away to buy these truck radios, right? That's all. You don't have to agree now, but that's kind of in principle where we're at. And I think that was Jeff's question as well.
Okay. Any further questions?
I don't believe my question was answered. How many radios will forty thousand dollars buy?
Thirty-five, so the math on that is eleven hundred dollars.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Kurt Rochala, Sixteen Union Street. And one of the biggest things about the radios that we have right now, they're not public safety radios, they're basically the same type of radio that a security guard would carry. So, they're not good in the, in the wet, which we kind of need. And also, we decided, the chief said that we decided to go with the radio for each firefighter versus one in the seat because it was about the same number. If we didn't have the radios, the portable radios, take home, we'd have to buy another radio. We'd have to buy a pager. So, this way, we get rid of the three-hundred-dollar pager and all the maintenance and everything that goes along with the pager, one radio, and that we can maintain easier.
Further discussion?
So, I do just want to clarify that the Board of Selectmen are recommending, are recommending the one-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-three dollar figure. That's what's authorized for free cash. If you appropriate the two-oh-nine-nine-seventy-three, we will not have a balanced budget, we do not have that extra forty-two thousand dollars to appropriate. So, the Selectmen will only authorize purchasing forty thousand dollars in radios because that's what they will have funding for.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Just, just quickly, on Article number five, there was a line for ninety-five-eighty for communications. Would that money then be reverted back because we don't need to pay for pagers? And could that be used to supplement additional radios?
Article five. Mr. Moderator? Hang on just a second, we're going to get this question answered first. Which line item was that? I'm sorry. You said?
Nine thousand five hundred.
Yep.
The chief would have to answer what his communication budget is for.
Chief would be happy to answer. It is not to buy, it's not to buy pages or portable radios. It's maintenance, it's website, it's software that we use for incident reporting, it's, it's telephone lines, it's other communication items, so kind of the higher level, but does not have pagers in it.
Okay, right over here.
Jeffrey Surt, Duane L Street. I just want somebody to clarify, before we vote on this, which figure are we voting on? The one-sixty-seven or the two-oh-nine?
Well, right now, the motion on the floor is for the two-hundred-and-nine-thousand dollars. If somebody, if whoever made that motion wanted to take it back, they could, right? But only the, only the person who made the motion. If that person chooses not to, then we're going to vote that number up or down, and then we're going to go from there. So, any further discussion?
Yes, I have something.
Oh, where are we?
Michael Wood, Eight School Street. So, chief, we were in that meeting, and you recommended the radios. You recommended the budget for the radios, and now you're saying you don't like the radios or the budget, or we're not doing enough, and that we're putting the firemen at risk? You're making us look like the bad guys here, that we're not in support of the fire department. Exactly what you're doing. You come in here and you portray to us that we don't support the fire department, when we all support the fire department, and you're telling us that we're not buying radios for the thing.
Okay, yeah. Mike, you're in a different meeting. Yeah, wasn't what I said. Folks, hey, you know what?
That's what I remember, I was there.
Listen, it's, it's not the, yeah, hang on. Folks, folks, hang on for just a second, okay? When we have a meeting, yes, we all speak, but we don't speak from person to person. You speak through the moderator, as Town Council did earlier. You don't have to say through the moderator, but that's what you're doing. So, it's not, you know, pointing to the person you're speaking to, it's through the moderator. So, we'll go that way. You don't just start speaking unless you're recognized.
Through the moderator.
Yes.
We can, yep.
We don't have to... All right. We have a motion, a second, for favorable action for two-hundred-and-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
We have a motion, a second, to move the Board of Selectmen recommended, recommended figure of one-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. Any further discussion? We'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Majority, yes. Okay, Article sixteen. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Whittier Regional Vocational Technical District Committee's vote on February tenth, two thousand and sixteen, to establish a stabilization fund pursuant to Section sixteen G and a half of Chapter seventy-one of the Massachusetts General Laws, said stabilization fund to be invested and to retain its own interest earnings as provided by law, and further set up an operational line item to be created to transfer available monies into said stabilization fund or take any other action relative thereto. Articles submitted by the Whittier Regional Vocational Technical High School Committee. The Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends?
Unfavorable action.
Unfavorable action. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second for favorable action.
We, we as a town pay an awful lot of money to the Whittier District right now. We have no say in the assessment value. We just have to pay it. Giving them another chance to retain monies that they bring in with us having no control, again, I don't think is a wise thing to do. That's what we voted on. That's why we voted it.
Any further discussion?
Again, you know, he's right, we, we don't have much control as a, I mean, as a, one member of the, the district, but savings accounts are good, and stabilization is for a purpose. If there are spikes in enrollment or costs in one year, would you rather have something go up, say, fifteen percent one year, and the next year it's down two? I mean, you know, to react and to be reactionary is not fiscally prudent. So, I encourage stabilization funds as this, as a savings account mechanism where if you have those spikes, you can level that by drawing on those stabilization funds when needed to help keep down spikes in our budget. So, it has a leveling effect within a budget. So, they're, they're going to do this anyways. We're just a minority shareholder, so to speak, in this district, and they're going to do it anyways. So, they're going to require this and send us a bill, whether we vote for this or not. I, I don't like to just sit back and take it, but, you know, unless you change the law and the legislature on this, it is what it is.
I am Doug Joliner from one-sixteen Main Street. I am the school committee member for Whittier Votech. I supported this with the school committee for the purpose of maintaining the property in the building. They have the same problems that we have in this town. They have roofs that leak, they have windows that need repairs, and this is our way of put some money aside so we can address the bigger problems. This money would not be spent without the approval of the school committee. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
I think it's the majority favorable. Article seventeen. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of fifteen thousand dollars from the Conservation Commission fees account to the Conservation Commission expense account for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen for the purposes of costs related to commission operating costs or to take any other action relative thereto. Articles submitted by the Conservation Commission. This article transfers funds from fees collected by the commission, from, by the commission to the commission services account. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends? We have a motion and a second for favorable action. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Article eighteen. To see if the town will vote to reauthorize the VZ Memorial Park revolving fund as established at the special town meeting held December second, nineteen ninety-six, and authorized by Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half of Massachusetts General Laws. The purpose of this fund is for the Conservation Commission to pay operating costs of VZ Memorial Park. The Conservation Commission may expend from this account an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen or take any other action relative thereto. The Conservation Commission shall give a report to the annual town meeting detailing the total receipts and expenditures of this fund for the fiscal year. Please see Appendix B for the report. Article B, I'm sorry, articles submitted by the Conservation Commission. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends?
Favorable action.
Just a question, it's, this is new for me, so it's, listen, the appendix, is somebody going to give the, or read that report, or it's just for people to look at in the audience?
I included them as appendix so people could read them ahead of time and not have to have a written, an oral report presented. It's up to you if you'd like it presented.
Okay. Now, that's, any questions on the report? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Article nineteen. To see if the town will vote to reauthorize the Pines Recreation Boat Ramp Revolving Fund as established at special town meeting held October thirteen, nineteen ninety-two, and authorized by Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half of Massachusetts General Laws. The purpose of this fund is to allow receipts received from the sale of Pines Boat Ramp and mooring permits to be expended without further appropriation for the purchase of floats, safety equipment, walk, walk ramp, necessary hardware for installation and maintenance and repairs of Pines Boat Ramp. The Pines Recreation Development Committee may, upon approval of the Board of Selectmen, expend from this account an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars during the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen or take any other action relative thereto. There shall be report to the annual town meeting detailing the total receipts and expenditures of this fund for the fiscal year. Again, please see Appendix B for the report. Article was submitted by the Finance Director. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends?
Favorable action.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action. Any discussion?
Dick Hodges, Thirty-five Union Street. Is there any possibility that any part of this money could go towards those pathetic-looking bathrooms down at the Pines compared, compared to the, those beautiful bathrooms that just went in over on the Shanahan Field?
Who wants to talk about that? Anyone answer that question for us?
The five thousand dollars is specifically for the boat ramp, for the float, safety equipment, walk ramp, and hardware for installation. This has nothing to do with anything else at the Pines other than the boat ramp.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Article twenty. To see if the town will vote to reauthorize the Zoning Board of Appeals revolving fund as established at annual town meeting held April twenty-seventh, two thousand and nine, and authorized by Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half of Massachusetts General Laws. The purpose of this fund is to hold fees paid by the applicants and to be expended without further appropriation for the payments of advertising and associated clerical work relative to the applicant's application. The Zoning Board of Appeals may, upon approval of the Board of Selectmen, expend from this account an amount not to exceed $5,000 during fiscal year 2017 or take any other action relative thereto. The Zoning Board of Appeals shall give a report to the annual town meeting detailing the total receipts and expenditures of this fund for the fiscal year. Again, please see Appendix B for the report. Articles submitted by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends...
Favorable action.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second for favorable action. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Unanimous? Article 21. To see if the town will vote to reauthorize the Bagnall School Summer Program Revolving Fund as established at annual town meeting held April 27, 2009 and authorized by Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2 of Massachusetts General Laws. The purpose of this fund is to hold fees paid by the applicants and to be expended for salaries, wages, and expenses of the Bagnall School Summer Program. The Bagnall School Summer Program may, upon approval of the Board of Selectmen, expend from this account an amount not to exceed $130,000 during fiscal year 2017 or take any other action relative thereto. The Director of the Program shall give a report to the annual town meeting detailing the total receipts and expenditures of this fund for the fiscal year. Please see Appendix B for the report. Articles submitted by the Finance Director. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends...
Favorable action.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action. Any discussion? Yeah, oh, hang on, just, yeah, over here.
Michael Pifferling, Hillview Drive. I have to say that this was a great program that was well-funded and well-attended, and it will be, again, well-attended, but limited. They jack the prices to the residents, and I really think that this program was running very well, very well-oiled, and I think that somebody messed this up.
Okay, further discussion down here?
Well, Daniel McDonald, Selectmen, again. This fund, and Denise can clarify even more on this in terms of the statute if she wants to, but this is limited under statute based upon a formula. So, what happened before was non-compliant. It exceeded the limits under state law. So, whoever wants to point fingers about what it is, I mean, change the law, but I can't. But this is an increase over the prior year, I believe it's 115,000, it's up to 130, and it's based upon a formula of our tax, overall tax levy in town. It can't be 200,000, it can't be 250. If you don't want it to be in a revolving fund, there's a mechanism called add it to the town budget maybe, but that's a whole nother process for another day. But if you want it in a revolving fund, you have to play by the rules under state law, Mass. General Laws, as to what and how much you can allow a revolving fund to collect. It is not unlimited. So, that's my two cents on it. I, I was elected to follow the law, thanks.
Okay, over here.
So, under Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, you're only allowed to spend 1% of the total tax levy in a revolving account. So, each year as the tax levy increases, this account could increase minimally, which is why we've gone up to the 130, which is 1% of our tax levy. And that is the most they are authorized to spend by law.
Further discussion?
I don't understand, Mr. Moderator, why this program was running fine at the 115,000 with over 300 children in it every summer, and now we're being restricted to 200 kids, and we can't get our kids in for full six weeks because it was cut back. So, we went up on the amount that we can put in the fund, we raised the fees to families in Groveland, and we cut the number of registrations we can have in this program.
So, the last several years, the program has spent in excess of $175,000. They have spent more than what was allowable under the law. So, when the board came in, the new five-member board came in, this was one of the items they looked at and realized this account was not in compliance. The 130,000 brings them into compliance, and unfortunately, there are some cuts that needed to be made to then bring them back down to what's allowable. So, they were not operating in the 115, they were operating 175 to 180.
Further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Unanimous, yes. Article 22. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Council on Aging Revolving Fund as authorized by Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2 of Massachusetts General Laws. Set accounts to be under the direction of the Council on Aging Director and used for the deposit of receipts collected through fees and public donations, and further to allow the Council on Aging to expend funds not to exceed $10,000 during fiscal year 2017 from said account for ongoing supplies and equipment or take any other action relative thereto. The Director of the Council on Aging shall give report to the annual town meeting detailing the total receipts and expenditures of the fund for this fiscal year. Articles submitted by Finance Director. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends...
Favorable action.
Do we have a motion? Okay, and we do have a report. I guess this one isn't in Appendix B, so who's gonna give their report, or we...
No, so may actually, this is actually a new revolving account.
Oh, okay.
The Council on Aging has been operating like they have a revolving account, but it's never been formally authorized at town meeting. So, this is just a formality to actually establish a revolving account, and then going forward, they will report to town meetings.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Unanimous? Article 23. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Fire Department CPR Class Revolving Fund as authorized by Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2 of Massachusetts General Laws. Set account to be under the direction of the Fire Chief and used for the deposit of receipts collected through class fees and public donations, and further to allow the Fire Chief to expend funds not to exceed $6,000 during fiscal year 2017 from said account for salaries and expenses related to CPR classes or take any other action relative thereto. The Fire Chief shall give a report to the annual town meeting detailing the total receipts and expenditures of this fund for the fiscal year. And again, this is a new revolving fund, so no report this year, next year. Articles submitted by Fire, by the Fire Department. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends...
Favorable action.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Unanimous? Article 24. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of up to $55,300 from the Community Preservation Fund General Reserve to be made available for the purpose of the development of Phase III of a plan for the, I'm sorry, for the Groveland Community Trail Project. Said project to be managed by the Town Finance Director and the Groveland Open Space and Trails Committee under the CPA categories of open space and recreation and to be completed no later than June 30th, 2019 or take any other action relative thereto. The article was submitted by the Community Preservation Committee. This project is for the third phase of planning and is being conducted to put a required plan in place to receive a Mass. DOT Transportation Improvement Plan grant for four to five million dollars to construct the Groveland Community Trail. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends...
Favorable action.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second for favorable action. Any discussion?
Alex Johnson.
You know, try that other one, Alex.
Alex Johnson, 461 Main, Chair of the Open Space and Trails Committee. So, just quickly, want to point out some things just so you know where we are, and hopefully, a lot of you collected this from Mike on the way in, but it's a nice recap of where we stand on the project. As a reminder, when we went into this project several years ago, there was clearly some concern that this was sort of a gamble with our CPA money, that, you know, some certain about how we were, where we were gonna go with this, when we were gonna fund it, how we were gonna pay for it, et cetera. And so, we went into this clearly with the intent to be very, very forthcoming, very clear, very measured, very thorough, and I think we've done that so far. But a big piece of that certainly was to space it out, to make sure we were not jumping in all at once. And so, and so what we've done is we've certainly, I believe, put the first $300,000 to good work thus far. And so, what we're really doing here tonight is coming to you to finish the funding that would be required, really, to put the off-road portion to bed. And so, first and foremost, you've spent the 300,000, or we've committed the 300,000 already to date, so certainly, if we don't decide to move forward with this vote tonight, that 300,000 that would be, that has been committed to date would obviously go to waste. So, I certainly would like, given it's been a very productive project so far, I'd like to see it taken to its completion, and so this will enable us to do that on the off-road portion. So, what does the 553 do specifically? Three things. One, full design of the trail extension, which is that, on that sheet, small little gray section at the end that completes the off-road portion, and the intent of including that now is because it saves us $15,000 in the long run. Two, is to design the street crossing at Estes, at the former Estes property, now Estes Park, to connect the off-road portion with the existing sidewalk structure that's there. And three, most importantly, it covers what we call construction engineering design cost or construction engineering support costs, which are essentially the engineering costs that are required when we get into construction to carry us all the way through the bill. And so, this would be the cost, again, to get it all the way built from our contribution. There was a question about funding for this. So, we did make a point on here, but just to clarify again for those of you who didn't see it on the Board of Selectmen meeting, we have, in fact, submitted and received a project number from Mass. Department of Transportation. A project ID number is key and critical because it allows us to enter into this iterative process of developing, designing, and formalizing this plan. While there's no guarantees, obviously, in this process, I would tell you that this is about as, as some certain as you get in this process. And in fact, when asked, the folks from Merrimack Valley Planning could not think of a single project that they've been through where you were awarded a project ID number and did not ultimately get funding. So, at this point, having gotten that project ID number, which is a major milestone for us and a major hurdle, you know, to me, it's not a question of if, but when. And so, that's a tremendous, a tremendous step in the right direction. A couple other quick things. One, want to remind you, very efficient use of tax dollars, not only is the CPA contribution a matched contribution, but the idea here is we put up our design cost, which, again, for the off-road portion would be completed with this amount, but then the state comes in and funds the entirety of the construction portion. So, thereon out, anything related to the off-road portion from a construction standpoint would be covered by the state. Oh, timeline, quick, just timeline. Obviously, we're two years in, made a ton of progress. I would tell you that comparatively, we are in two years where most towns find themselves in five, six, seven years down the road. So, I think we're, we've put ourselves in a very advantageous position because we've been able to accelerate what is typically a much longer timeline. So, I think we've put ourselves in a position to be able to take advantage of the funding should it be available sooner than expected. Oh, and so why now? So, most importantly, just quickly, the reason why we're doing this now, the reason why we're trying to get the funding for the balance of the off-road portion and design is because, because we go into this queue for state funding, and, and while this may be a multi-year stretch to get that funding, oftentimes, things will fall out of that queue if they're not prepared in time. And I know we've said this before, but it's critical and important that we put ourselves in a position where if the timeline does get accelerated, we want to be able to take advantage of that and get under construction sooner than expected. So, anyway, I, I just ask for your support in moving this along. Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Majority favorable. Article 25. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of up to $42,251 from the Community Preservation Fund's Historic Reserve to be made available for the purpose of reserving and managing the historical documents maintained by the town clerk. Said project to be managed by the Town Finance Director and the Town Clerk under the CPA category of historic preservation and to be completed no later than June 30th, 2019 or take any other action relative thereto. Articles submitted by the Community Preservation Committee. This proposal details a plan to scan our historic documents and only store originals of our most historic and legal items. This project would clear town hall of all the paper while making historic documents easier to find and more accessible to the public. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends...
Unfavorable action.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second for favorable action. Discussion? Want to explain your unfavorable, or... Do you want to explain your...
Our reason for unfavorable is we felt that the 42,000, whatever that told, 42,251 was very excessive for the expenses of what they're trying to do, and we didn't feel it was the time to go forward without a better background check on how much this should really cost. We do agree that this is a valuable thing for our town's documents, but not at this cost.
Further discussion? Go ahead, on the end.
The documents are in storage, so, I mean, if people want access to them, seems reasonable to me that they should be able to be scanned and maybe online at some point, but it seems like a sin to have all kinds of historical documents in town sitting in a drawer somewhere and no one can access them. So, you know, sooner or later, you gotta do something about it or might as well throw them away, so, which I don't advocate. But, you know, they got the bids on it, I believe. Didn't they get some bids on this when we discussed it? It seemed reasonable, so I think we should proceed with it.
Over here, Denise.
Yes, so, to my knowledge, the Community Preservation Committee did have solid quotes regarding this request. This would make birth, death, marriage certificates all scannable, accessible, in addition to other ZBA documents, plans, things like that, that are all, as Dan alluded to, all currently sitting in a vault, inaccessible. So, this is based on a solid quote for the equipment and software and scanning capability to put these documents in archive.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Majority favorable. Article 26. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of up to $12,000 from the Community Preservation Fund's Historic Reserve FY 2017 to be made available for the purpose of conducting a historic property survey by the Town Historic Commission. Said project to be managed by the Town Finance Director and the Historic Commission under the CPA category of historic preservation and be completed no later than June 30th, 2019 or take any other action relative thereto. Articles submitted by the Community Preservation Committee. It says identify and document buildings and structures that are architecturally and historically significant to the history and development of Groveland. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends...
Unfavorable action.
Do we have a motion? What was the motion for favorable action? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Okay, we have a motion and a second for favorable action. Discussion? Guys want to explain, or...
We just think it's unnecessary.
All right, any further discussion? Dan.
Again, this is my personal opinion, but I'm sitting here, so I'll pass it on to you. I think history is worth preserving. Once you lose it, it's gone, so we need to find out what's here, make people aware of it, and oftentimes, people just don't even know. So, I think a survey is a good idea. I'm pretty conservative in spending money, but $12,000, if it gets the job done and you know the history of Groveland, and we can take steps to implement preserving it and sharing it with everybody in town. Right now, who knows?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Majority favorable. Article 27. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a reserve from Community Preservation Fund fiscal year 2017, estimated annual revenues, the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for the committee administrative expenses, debt service, community preservation projects, and other expenses, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Purpose appropriations committee administrative expenses, that's right, $20,000. Under the reserves, open space, $50,000, historic resources, $50,000, community housing, $50,000, or take any other action relative thereto. Articles submitted by the Community Preservation Committee. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends...
Favorable.
Yep. We have a motion and a second for favorable action. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Majority favorable. Article 28. To see if... Just clarifying, a motion to table has been made and seconded. There is no debate allowed with a motion to table. Requires a two-thirds vote to pass. All in favor of the motion to table? Article 27, I'm sorry, Article 28, say aye. Oppose, say no. I didn't hear two-thirds. Okay, hang on. Okay, it, I just been advised, it, I'm sorry, it takes seven people to... Okay, I just been advised, I'm sorry, it takes seven people to challenge the vote, so do we have seven people that want to hand count? Okay, so there's still no discussion involved here, we're just, we're going to take a hand count. So the motion was to table, Article 28. All in favor, raise your hand. Right now, we're voting, if you don't want to table the motion, you raise your hand now. Correct. The motion was to table, we just counted the yes, now we're counting the noes. So, the motion is, the article is not tabled. I don't believe I got through reading everything, so I'm just going to start right here, carry on. Yeah, thank you. So Article 28, to see if the town will vote to rescind the $750,000 borrowing authorization for the purchase of an aerial ladder truck for the use of the fire department, which appropriation was approved by the town under Article 11 of the warrant at 2015 Annual Town Meeting, or take any other action relative thereto. The article was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends?
Unfavorable action.
Do we have a motion? If somebody would just like to make a motion for favorable action, so we, let's move favorable action, please, just so we can get it going. Will somebody make that motion for me? The second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second for favorable action under Article 28, discussion. Yep, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I prepared a statement with the help of the Board of Selectmen regarding this issue, but I do need your consent, because the statement also mentions the other two articles following 28, 29, and 30, and because they're interrelated, the statement hopefully serves ultimately to educate how these warrants are interrelated. So with your permission, I'd like to read the statement.
You're just going to read it once, right? Not three times?
Just once.
Okay, thank you.
Bill is my dentist. Keep in mind, folks, that the 28, 29, and 30 are interrelated. 29, we want to get rid of an authorization to buy a truck, and the reason for that is we didn't identify how we were going to find money to buy it that way. The other two will explain two other methods on how to buy a truck, either all at once or a little bit at a time. So here's the statement. The statement was approved by consensus of the board. It is the consensus of the board to purchase a fire truck for the fire department. This desire has been well communicated by the Board of Selectmen members by both actions in the form of votes and open session discussions. The three articles that impact this decision are Articles 28, 29, and 30. These three articles effectively ask Town Meeting to rescind last year's debt authorization since there was no identifiable source of funding and was openly declared as an error made by the board at that time. We actually admitted a mistake. To implement an effective and practical method of paying for the vehicle, it is the expressed desire of this board to offer all eligible voters the option to support and pay for the truck by either a capital exclusion arrangement or a debt exclusion arrangement. Both of these require the taxpayers to pay amounts in excess of their current taxes. The Board of Selectmen will strongly advocate for the purchase of the truck and hope the Town Meeting will approve both articles, the both methods on how to pay for it. So whichever one is successful at the ballot on May 2nd, we would not need to convene a special Town Meeting to ratify the vote. So Article 28 is to rescind last year's debit authorization, a formality, to remove the borrowing authorization from our financial statements. If you choose not to rescind this authorization, it still does not authorize a purchase of a truck. Remember that only the Board of Selectmen may authorize making a purchase. Town Meeting may only authorize the appropriation. On Article 29, capital exclusion, a one-time payment, this would authorize a one-time tax increase to cover the purchase of an aerial ladder truck. The impact would be approximately 90 cents per thousand. So on a half a million dollar home, roughly, a one-time increase to your tax bill, as your contribution for the $750,000 that we need to buy a truck would result in approximately $400,000, excuse me, $400 that year. I can just hear McDonald come up with something now. A debt exclusion is a 20-year borrowing scheme. This would authorize a 20-year borrowing, including principal and interest, to cover the purchase of a truck. Based on the current interest rates, the impact would be approximately eight cents per thousand to the tax rate in the highest years and decrease over 20 years. So for that same half million dollar home, it would be approximately $45 extra in your tax bill, but then you would get a little extra for the next 19 years. As Bill had said in public meetings, of course, that'll cost us more money because we're having both principal and interest. I believe it'd be close to like 1.2 million. Ultimately, we would pay as a town collectively. So it's your choice. You either pay all at once or a little bit at a time. This board hopes that you'll choose both so that we can all decide at the ballot, not here tonight. Thank you.
Okay, over here, Don.
Hi, Don Grinney. I'd just like to know how we were able to close last, I'd like to know how we were able to close last year's Town Meeting if we voted this article to do a borrowing. The other item that was on there was a radio console, I believe, for the police department under the same article, and that's been purchased, as far as I know. So if we closed the meeting without having the funding for every item we voted, wouldn't that be illegal?
Do we have an answer?
The articles last year were actually voted to be separated, that capital article, but no, again, the Board of Selectmen authorized the purchase. This group only authorizes the appropriation, so we could certainly rescind all or part of that vote if we chose to do so.
Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, Mitchell Croner, 3 Cannon Hill Road Extension. With your permission, are we discussing all three articles at once?
Right now, we are discussing Article 28, but as the Selectmen said, the next three go together, so they're putting their presentation together for all of them. But we are, we're going to vote on Article 28. Further discussion?
Over here. Alan Credit, Kingsway. The reason to table this is if it doesn't pass here in the next two articles or at the ballot box, we may be able to come back to the town and get some of the $750,000 that the town voted for last year. So if the following two articles do not pass, and it doesn't pass at the ballot box, we aren't going to get a ladder truck, we may be able to come back and squeeze some money out of some of these guys. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yeah, just, Dan, hang on a second.
Justin Gordon, One Wolf Drive. The Finance Committee never said why unfavorable to rescind.
We don't want to rescind it.
Say why not? Tell them why.
We felt that the people in this group voted for this last year, under the understanding that there would be a ladder truck purchased somehow. That's what we thought.
Hey, a second, down here first. Go ahead, Dan.
I'll take the dissent on this. Again, you need to follow the laws, all of them, okay? So last year was different than this year, okay? Imagine that, times change. We had free cash of almost $700,000 this year. Last year, what was our free cash, Finance Committee? Oh, zero, I'm sorry. So there was nothing in the budget to make the debt service payments. Approximately, what, $70,000, $72,000 a year? So, there's a problem, and it's epidemic in this country. You think that you borrow the money and you paid for it. You haven't even started paying for it, and there wasn't any money in the budget to make the debt service payments on it. So somebody overlooked that, and it wasn't me, I wasn't on the board, okay? So let's get the facts straight. If you're going to come up with a budget and you're going to borrow $750,000, and it's going to end up costing you over a million dollars, use your brains, folks, and put some money in the budget and actually fund it. How about that?
Over here.
I don't know how I follow that up, but my question is if we don't rescind this and we do approve the next two, does that mean there's truly 1.5 million if this comes back to vote after we table it and it doesn't get rescinded?
That, go ahead.
That's my concern, is we're putting 1.5 million on the table. I'd like to rescind this before we actually vote on 750. I am in favor of a ladder truck, I am in favor of voting favorable in both of the next two articles, but I don't want 1.5 million on the table at one time.
So the rescinding of this, really, it's, as Joe articulated, it's a formality. It sits out on our financial statements as authorized and unissued. If it's not rescinded this year and the Board of Selectmen choose not to make a purchase under that, at some point in the future, we would have to rescind it just to clear it up off of our financials.
As the way, as the way it was going, when the board, it came before this board, and I was probably one of the biggest advocates in, you know, we have an issue between the Selectmen and the fire department, and I am 100% in favor of this truck. I've said it all along. I was not going to take and trim someone out of the town of a job and have to trim the town budget. At that point in time, when we discussed this, we did not have free cash that we have now. We did not know we had that free cash. So at that point in time, I am probably one of the big, biggest advocates that wanted to put this before the people of the town of Groveland to go to the ballot, to go to the voting box and vote it on themselves. And I think if we come in here tonight and we vote down what we did last year, which we did not have a definite financial way to finance this truck. We didn't, I was on that board, for whatever reason, we didn't have it, we didn't. I think if we can get this first thing done, I am confident that the people of Groveland will do the right thing for Groveland, and they'll get you, get a truck in here. And that's why we tried putting it back in May on the election. Thank you.
Go ahead, Chief.
Bill, thank you. Robert Lay, Fire Chief. A couple of things. I don't like this any more than anybody else does, but if you watch television on Monday night, you will know we've had a few sets of discussion around this. So this, just like the portable radio discussion, I'm in agreement. I agreed to the $42,000, I agree to this approach, because we got to get out of this mess that we're in, right? So I, right, I agree with the board, make this go away, we'll do it again, we'll buy the truck. Even if you tabled this now, I'd have to go buy a truck the next month. The truck that I've got my eye on isn't available till September, so don't worry about the truck, don't worry about any of that, it's going to happen, but we need to be able to fund it. That's what this is about. I'm in agreement with the board, you know, what went wrong, went wrong, just something that happened, right? So the way to get out of this is vote yes on 28, get out of it, say yes to 29, get back into it, go to the ballot and pick one, okay? Either like to pay for stuff when you buy it, or you like to finance things that you buy. That's your choice. So you got to go to the ballot in a week and just pick one. Plain and simple, we leave here friends, and it's all good, and the town can be happy to have a new ladder truck 16 months later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, I'm going to hug you later. Are we drinking?
Yeah.
All right. I haven't had a drink in 32 years, but I'll have a Pepsi with you.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Majority favorable. Article 29. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $750,000, more or less.
Beautiful, we're all set, nobody's going anywhere. My three out-of-town firefighters will handle that call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll keep reading. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $750,000, more or less, for the purpose of purchasing and equipping an aerial ladder truck for the use of the fire department, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, provided however that the appropriate, I'm sorry, the appropriation authorized hereunder shall be contingent upon approval by the voters of a ballot question, to exclude the amount raised and appropriated for said purchase from the limitation of total property taxes set forth in Chapter 59, Section 21(c) of the General Laws, Proposition 2 1/2, so-called, or take any other action relative thereto. The article is submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Finance Board recommends?
Unfavorable action.
Unfavorable action, we have a motion? We have a motion and a second for favorable action and discussion. You want to explain?
I'll just explain why we said unfavorable. I believe most of you vote for Selectmen to help run the town and help direct you to make these proper decisions. Giving you a choice as to which way you want to have your debt paid off, I think is inappropriate. They should have made that decision for us, presented it to us, and we could have voted for it. That's why we said unfavorable. We are not against buying the new ladder truck.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Where are we? Okay, go ahead.
Charles Harris, 94 Main Street. What does more or less mean?
A little more, a little less, say. Let's, you know, we had this conversation before, can somebody explain that for us?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, in response to the question, it means just a little bit more, but not so much that it would offend somebody if they saw $750,000 on the warrant, didn't come to the meeting, and found out that a higher amount was spent. It's a judgment call.
I thought this has sort of been researched out, that we sort of knew where the limit was going to be, and if anything, it should be worded in a way that it's up to an amount. It doesn't seem like more or less would be appropriate. I mean, this is our second time bringing this to Town Meeting. Seems like there's been some numbers floating around, that's why it just, more or less seems kind of ambiguous to me.
You can offer up an amendment if you want.
I would propose an amendment up to the sum of $750,000 if that's what was decided, and not have this more or less.
So you're making a motion to amend it to?
I would make a motion to amend it, saying that, you know, raise and appropriate up to the sum of $750,000 and get rid of the more or less.
Do we have a second for that motion to amend? Okay, discussion? Let's take a vote. All those in favor, we're just, we're not voting the whole article, we're just voting to change the words, a couple of them, to just say up to $750,000, not more or less. So all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Amendment carries. Any further discussion on the motion as amended?
Yes.
Yep. Go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry.
Michael Wood. So in response to the unfavorable action by the Finance Committee, the board voted to have two articles in response to us not telling the town what they can and can't afford. Who am I to say that someone can afford $450 this year, or $45 over the course of 20 years? Maybe $450 is a lot to me, maybe it's not to you. So who am I to determine what you can and can't pay?
Go ahead, Mitch.
Mitchell Croner, 3 Cannon Hill Road Extension. Question for Town Council through the moderator. If you look at the way the two articles are worded, 29 and 30, the wording is different than the ballot questions that are at the end of the warrant. I realize there's certain limitations under state election laws with Prop 2 1/2 overrides. However, one of the questions, the question one, which I guess is the debt exclusion, mentions 2 1/2, but the question two, which is, I guess we pay it in a lump sum, does not, and I'm curious why we couldn't have had a little better explanation. I agree with Andy Wiles, I think it's going to be confusing for the voters. I think it's gonna be confusing for the voters as to what's what and what costs what. So, I'm not sure if there's a way to get the word out. I understand the Selectmen's position, but I tend to agree with Andy. I think it was up to the Selectmen to feel what's best for the town. I think the people should keep in mind that if we pay for it all in one year and you move out of town next year, you paid for a truck, and the person that buys your house, they have a brand-new truck. They don't have to pay for it at all. I think it's also unfair that people on a fixed income are gonna have to pay $450 all at once. So, personally, I'm in favor of doing the debt exclusion, which is how we've done things in the past. You don't pay cash for your house, so I'm not sure why you're paying cash for the truck. Thank you. And I'm in favor of the truck.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Lee Thomas Baldwin Terrace. Just a clarification. So, with this amendment that just passed, if the truck costs $751,000, we can't buy it?
If it, yes, passed that way. And I'm sorry, we had a question for our Town Council that I didn't let him answer.
Mr. Moderator, through you in response to the question from the floor over here, the wording of the articles was reviewed and approved by Bond Council. The wording of the actual ballot questions that you find three pages later is right out of the statute. The wording has to be that way for question one and question two. There's no leeway there at all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hank, yep, go over here.
Kurt Rochala, 16 Union Street. One of the things that did not mention either article is the fact on a new or used truck, and when this debate has been going on for a little bit, and we've, I think through the, our meetings with the Selectmen, we have come down to a new truck, and that's through the cost of financing a truck several times. A new ladder truck for us would be a 30-year truck typically. So, that means that no one here probably will be voting for another ladder truck. And the other issue is that used trucks don't come with warranties. You can pick it up one day. It could be in Illinois. You pick it up, you bring it back, it fails, you just bought it. So, there's no warranties that go along with those trucks. So, our assumption is that this article will be for a new vehicle, which we've spent the last 18 months looking for.
Hang on, was there further discussion here before we? Somebody wants to offer up an amendment? Yeah, let's go, come to a mic so we can hear it.
Amend this article to include a new truck.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion to amend the article to make it a new truck?
I would say that I'd make it a friendly amendment to that, that it needs to be a demo, because I know in conversations with the chief and in the, in the committee, some of those trucks could be up to a million dollars. So, I wouldn't want to handicap them on a truck they couldn't afford that would be 800 or 900. So, I see the chief there.
You are correct, Bill, but if you approve 750, I can't buy a million-dollar truck. So, we don't have to worry about that. We know what the pricing is. They range from mid-sixes to 1.3, 1.4 million dollars. We've done a lot of research. Our intent, and it's been our intent from the very beginning, when we came off the 850 number and went to 750, which we were in agreement, again, we agreed on this number throughout, that we would be able to do that because we would be in the demo market. So, a demo is lightly used. Somebody drove it around, like the car dealership boss, he showed it to other people to gain interest in it. He didn't go to fires in it, and then he sells it because he puts some miles on it. It's new, lightly used, and that's the demo market. It is the wisest way for us to buy, and it's what the committee come up with after 18 months of work. And again, we've talked to the Board extensively about this and capital, and the demo market is, is our best opportunity. So, you know, $750,000 for a new truck, and I think the amendment is wise because you do want new. You don't want to buy a used truck.
Moderator?
Okay, yep, over here.
I just want to go back to the chief's comment.
Yeah, go ahead. Hang on just a second.
Going through the moderator, chief. Am I correct to say that we have found a truck and we can purchase a truck up to that dollar amount?
You are correct.
And it, we have something in the works. Just to let everybody know, there's something in the works.
Correct.
And we don't have to talk about used truck. We're talking about a new demo truck, and we'll be good.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Did I hear somebody say they wanted to rescind their amendment? Okay.
My amendment. Quick question, clarifying question. Does a demo model come with the same warranties as a new model? Okay, with that being said, I'd like to amend my motion or withdraw my motion to make a new motion, that it be new or demo.
Okay, do we have a second for that? Further discussion? All in favor of the amendment that it's new or demo, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay. Any further discussion on voting this motion as amended? I'm sorry, over here, Denise.
I just wanted to clarify, to let everybody know, that Article 29 is for a capital exclusion. So, this is the one for a one-time payment. It doesn't clearly specify that because it is the legal language that's required, but this one is for the capital exclusion, just to make that clear.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
A majority favorable. Article 30. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or borrow the sum of $750,000, more or less, for the purpose of purchasing and equipping an aerial ladder truck for the use of the Fire Department, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet said appropriation, authorize the treasurer with approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow said sum under generalized Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bond or notes of the town therefore, provided however that the appropriation authorized hereunder shall be contingent upon approval by the voters of a ballot question to exclude the amount required to pay for the bond or notes issued for said project from the limitation on total property taxes set forth in Chapter 59, Section 21(c) of the General Laws, Proposition 2 1/2, so-called, or take any other action relative thereto. The article is submitted by the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. The Finance Board recommends...
Favorable action.
Favorable action. Do we have a motion?
Motion to amend?
Before we, we, can we amend it before we have an action? We need a motion, actually favorable or, if we can make a motion for favorable action, then we can make a motion, okay? Motion and a second for favorable action. Discussion.
Motion to amend to up to $750,000 for a new or demo.
Okay. Second on that? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay. Majority yes on the amended amendment. This does require a 2/3 majority vote. Is that correct? Okay. Any further discussion on the article, the motion as amended? Nope. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Majority yes. Feel safe. We okay? Okay, thank you. Carry on. Article 31. To see if the town will vote to rescind its acceptance of the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Sections 42, 43, and 44, the so-called strong fire chief statute, and further to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 42a, the so-called weak fire chief statute, or take any other action relative thereto. The article is submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Accepting this statute would give the Selectmen appointing authority over all positions within the Fire Department, and further gives them authority to set wages and establish regulate, I'm sorry, regulations within the Fire Department. A copy of Chapter 48, Section 42a is inserted in the warrant for informational purposes only, Appendix C. The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action. Do we have a motion? Motion for favorable action, do we have a second? Discussion.
Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
I'd like to ask your consent to ask the town meeting to consider voting for this matter through a secret ballot.
So, are you making a motion to?
Yes. Motion.
We have a motion for, for secret ballot. Do we have a second? Sorry, did I? Okay. Just hang on for a second. What, what kind of a... Okay, we have a motion on the floor to make this a secret ballot vote here tonight. We can debate that motion. It just requires a simple majority for it to pass. Any discussion? All, oh, go ahead.
The reason why we decided to go with a secret ballot is because, I will try and keep it as clean as I can. I have gotten in the last week at least three to four people that have called me and personally asked that we do a paper ballot, because people think if they raise their hand, they're gonna have retaliation. And this is the reason why we went the way we went.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. Yes, yes, sir. Mr. Moderator.
Okay, go ahead.
I agree with Bill, and, you know, I hear some people laughing, but, I mean, get real, folks. Don't be so naive. You know, this affects the Fire Department, and you see a lot of firemen here, and I hope that there's not intimidation or anything going on, I really do. But, you know what? I believe privacy, and if this affects somebody's job and their livelihood, you know, this has to, this, this, this article, can we talk about the...
Right now, we're talking about whether we're gonna make this a secret ballot vote here tonight.
Yeah. Based upon the requests, and some of them, I believe one of them or more were firemen, Bill. And so, for that reason, I think we need a private vote to keep it impartial without any undue influence from your neighbor, your friend, your brother, your mother, anybody else here, or anybody you work with. It ought to be a private vote.
Any further discussion? So, we have a motion to make this a secret? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
This sets a bad precedent. The next thing that somebody doesn't want to talk about, they're gonna ask for a private ballot, and before we know it, we'll be doing this every single time we move on anything. I just think it's a bad idea to start.
Can I? I just, I mean, we have done a secret ballot before. It's a long time ago. I think it was when we were voting for V.C. Park, but I don't know if there's any since then, but just throw that out there for you. Further discussion? All those in favor of making this question decided by secret ballot here tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
So, and again, just, we have a motion. Yes, we did, we had a motion for favorable action, okay? All right, so, folks, let's carry on. We had a motion and a second for favorable action under Article 31. Discussion.
Just the moderator?
Yep. All right, I hear a motion to table. No discussion allowed on that. All those in favor of tabling Article 31, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Yeah, so, motion table does not carry. Again, we have a motion under Article 31 for favorable action. We have a motion and a second. Discussion under that motion.
I have a question, Mr. Moderator. If, if this is voted as yes, do any articles that involve fire chief authority become nullified that we've already voted on?
Can somebody answer that for us?
Yes, I can.
Go ahead.
The answer to that question is no. If we revert to the weak chief law, this does not apply to the current chief. And I hope that answers your question. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Oh, Hank.
I have a statement that was guided also by the Board of Selectmen regarding this issue.
We'll, we'll let you read it. Just hang on for a second. We'll keep up with the audience. Go, go ahead over here.
DeKodj is still residing at 35 Union Street. They, I'm a little concerned, and maybe it's for lack of my own research. I'm not in favor of any weak fire chief, not in favor of a weak Selectmen, I'm not in favor of a weak police chief. My, my support would be for the strong fire chief statute.
What about a weak moderator? Further discussion?
John McCombsky, 27 Broad Street. Can the Board of Selectmen state their experience with running a fire department or volunteering at a fire department? Anything of that nature?
All right, folks, let's carry on. So, Joe, do you have a statement there?
No, we can't.
What makes you think you can?
I have a statement, and I'll read it out to you.
Yeah, go ahead.
It'll be my rationale.
Let's hear it.
First of all, very quickly, Mr. Moderator, the weak chief law is kind of a silly term, but what it means, it's a managerial chief, meaning that he reports in a certain way, has a certain relationship with the Board of Selectmen. And the strong chief is more of an administrative position with far more autonomy. So, my statement, which was approved by consensus and written with the Board of Selectmen, will help clarify the issue and our position. By unanimous consent and vote, the Board of Selectmen wishes to retain authority to appoint all positions in the Fire Department. This authority exists with all other departments except the Fire Department. The removal of this authority was done by town meeting vote on April 29, 2013, by Article 16, and the Board perceives this as an arrangement that is detrimental to the townspeople. In no way does the Board advocate for this position as a method to enforce a condition on the current chief. In fact, the Board is aware that the change, if it materializes, will not apply to the current chief. Below are comments from Town Council confirming this. Quote, "The current fire chief would remain a so-called strong chief for the remainder of his tenure in that position in light of the fact that he was appointed to the position at the time the Fire Department was reorganized pursuant to the section of the General Laws. Upon the current chief's leaving office, whether voluntarily or involuntarily, the incoming appointee would be a so-called weak chief, and the Fire Department would be under the control of the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Section 42.8 of Chapter 48. The Board has received responses from members of the Fire Department that there is a concern that the fire chief will lose authority to set departmental pay rates if we revert to the weak chief law. But, folks, under either the strong or the weak chief law, the fire chief does not have such authority. That authority falls solely on the Board of Selectmen in both laws. In accordance with the strong chief statute, MGL, Chapter 48, Section 42, he shall fix the compensation of the permanent and call members of the Fire Department, subject to the approval of the Selectmen. The Board would like to start enforcing that requirement and have all pay rates, especially increases, come before the Board of Selectmen. The law will also say that the control of the Fire Department and the property allotted to the Fire Department, including fire apparatus, is fully vested in the fire chief. We are not gonna play firemen here. We're only asking for appointing authority, the same authority we have with all other departments and all other employees, and the ability to set pay rates. Thank you for your consideration."
Okay, down here, Dan.
This isn't about strong or weak. This is about a democratic process versus an autocracy. The strong chief law gives the power to one person, okay? You want to give the power to one person? Someone said they, they don't support a, a weak Board of Selectmen. Well, I wasn't elected to be a dictator, okay? This is an enabling act, okay? This is an enabling act, okay? Without recourse by the people. If the Board of Selectmen can hire people, that doesn't mean we're going to micromanage the fire department. You're right, I don't know about fire. I have no intention to manage the fire department. But when you have a strong chief statute in place, like we're doing, it's only been in place for three years, and prior to that, the town didn't go to part because we had a weak chief statute. We were fine. Everything was smooth. We have a strong chief law now, and do you know that it gives the person tenure? So if we hire the next guy and he's 47 years old, he gets a job until he's 65. And absent taking the man or woman to court, which would cost this town bucks, okay? For cause. That means litigation in this day and age, okay? So you want, and, and you hire that strong chief, and he can hire and fire, he can, and, and, and get involved in favoritism, again, I hope it doesn't happen, he can get involved in nepotism, cronyism, patronism, and what's your recourse? The only way to get that guy out of there is to take him to court for, for cause, okay? We need a democratic system. You can hire or fire any one of us on this board here. If you think we engage in, in dirty politics and hiring somebody for the wrong reason, we don't do it at the police department. The police were before us. The police chief comes in with a recommendation. We look at the resumes, the qualifications, we look around, all right, give him a probationary period. I, I, I don't vote on hiring firemen or policemen because of some political reason. Give me a break, folks, all right? So to think we're going to meddle in the affairs of the fire department is false. This is an autocratic statute. There isn't anything like it in this town. I don't think it belongs in Groveland, let, let alone a democratic society. I hate this statute. Came into play in 1917. What was going on in 1917?
Okay, we understand your point.
You get my point? Look at the history of the statute. It was to protect jobs for certain people.
Okay, let's, let's keep it moving. We're, we're over here.
Hello, Fred Hall, 35 Broad Street. I'm a civilian, so I don't have any real vested interest in this. However, I have utmost respect for the Board here. A prior member of the Board may be very upset as a citizen because of the relationship that Board member had with the police department. And our chief of police was given undue stress on something he should not have been given stress upon. Therefore, I believe in professionals to run their departments. I believe in a strong chief. But also, hold your applause, because a pox on your house also. I don't like the budgeting that has been going on from the fire department to the Board of Directors, and it's been going on for years with too much arguing. So I believe in a strong chief, but I want you to get your house in order.
Further discussion? Over here.
Jim Snow, 11 Burke Street. As a firefighter for 33 years on a professional department, you know, these guys are, and women are professional too. The difference between them and me is I get a salary and benefits and a pension when I'm done. But I've worked under both a strong and a weak chief, and I can tell you one thing, a strong chief is the way to go. He's a professional, he knows how to run a department. I now have a weak chief. He has no authority. This Board of Selectmen or the town administrator rules with an iron fist, tells him what to do, when to spend, when not to spend. We have to have every decision go over to Town Hall. It's not fair, it's not right. The people that sit on the Board or on a city council or whatever, they're part-time people. I don't want to tell Bill or anyone else up there how to run their business. You shouldn't tell the fire chief how to run his business. It's not right. Keep the strong chief. I ask you to turn this down. Thank you.
Further discussion? Over here.
Cindy Gertz, Wilbur Ave. My question to the Board is, why the fire department? Why not all the departments?
Go ahead.
Because it seems like tonight you guys are really against the fire department.
Folks, come on, we're, we're doing pretty well here. Let's keep moving. Go ahead.
Thank you for your question. We do have that authority over all other departments and employees. We have the authority to set pays. We have the authority to approve hires by recommendation. The best example would be the police chief, for example. The police chief does not have autonomy as the fire chief does. He comes to us for the approval of just about everything. Now, the way the tradition has been is we have never meddled in actually running the police department. When there has been meddling, in the course of the last 60 years or so, there's been some isolated incidences which have led to legal problems, but for the most part, this town has done a very good job of running its departments with the authority that we're asking for, that the police chief has, for example, but we don't have that with the fire chief. We would like to have that returned to us, meaning us, the townspeople.
All right, anybody have anything new to add to discussion?
Yes, I do. Kurt Rochella, 16 Union Street. Fire captain, firefighter for 31 years, worked under Board of Engineers, Commissioners, and the strong chief. For me, and to, to answer some of the questions first for the Board is, there's no nepotism. We're a qualified department. The guys typically make, you know, $4,000, $5,000 a year. Some of who are around more make a little bit more than that, but this is not, people don't get into the call fire service to go to the bank. We do it because we, we love the town, we love doing the job. And for me, this comes down to safety. We can't have people who don't understand what we do managing us. This group here has a say in everything we spend. We don't get pay raises unless you give them to us. We don't get fire trucks unless you give them to us. We spend within our budget. You saw our budget, $250,000. So this comes down to safety and having someone that's responsible. Because if you have a Board or anyone else involved, it's going to be the chief saying, "I need this," the Board saying, "You don't need it." And whatever they say, they still have 100% scrutiny over where we spend our money, when we train, and what calls we go to. Once we get on scene, yes, the fire chief takes over, but up until that point, they have the incomplete say. So to make sure that the firefighters are safe as possible, we need a strong chief, one person responsible. Good, bad, if they make a bad hire, I'd rather have a bad hire that's responsible that we can point the finger at than having a whole bunch of people pointing their fingers at each other saying, "It's not my fault." Thank you.
Over, over here, Bill.
I would like to say that, number one, that someone who made a comment here a few minutes ago, I'm a landscaper. I have no intention of trying to tell this fire department what to do, police department, highway department, whatever. I am here, I've been elected by you people to do a job and to keep the firemen safe and the town people safe. I can sit here tonight and say, truly from my heart, I cannot stand the, the relationship we have with the fire department and us. We as a Board, and I am committed to working together with these guys. I don't like the pull and push. It isn't worth it. I want what's right for the department, and I don't think anyone on this Board over here is going to try and tell the fire department what to do, how to, how to run their trucks, buy hoses or whatever. I think all that they're trying to do, and maybe it's been taken out of text or whatever, they're just trying to have a little more say. And I truly believe I can, hopefully with the Board, build a better relationship and we all can have more conversation on this. Thank you.
Let's just, yeah, back over here.
Alan Credit, Kingsbury, member of the fire department. Mr. Moderator, we've heard tonight that, um, where the fire department is compared to other town departments. Other town departments have something we don't. They have a chief with a contract, they have a union. We don't have any of that. The only guy we have to advocate for us is the fire professional, the fire chief. Now, I understand this Board doesn't intend to make any changes or, or do anything to jeopardize that. I'm afraid what happens down the road with further Boards, the fire department should be run by a fire professional.
Back over here, we'll just, who has, does somebody else? Yeah, okay, go ahead.
I want to pose this question to the fire department. Suppose, well, we hire that next fire chief, we hire the wrong guy. Then what? Then what? They got, they got a ten, they get ten, they get tenure. They get a job for their career, 65 years of age. Please respond on that.
Yeah, I'll answer that. Kurt Rochella, 16 Union Street, fire captain. Basically, you have one person responsible, they're not doing the job, you have a reason to get rid of them. So if they're not doing their job, and the expectation should be set by the Board of Selectmen on what those responsibilities are. And if they're not doing it, then you get rid of them, just like any other employee. Right now, if, what if we don't like the guy you put in? And all of us don't like it? And you guys won't change? What, what ultimatum do we have? We're stuck with them. Absolutely. No, but my point is, if we have one person responsible, you can say, "You're not doing your job." You can't point to the Board and say, "You're not doing your job," because you're going to look at us and say, "We are, in our opinion, and we're in charge." So you can't tell us that, you know, what if we make a mistake? If you make a mistake, you fix it. But I'm telling you, from the standpoint of having one person in charge, it brings the continuity of the fire department together. And more firefighters are killed and injured because of disorganization than any other cause. Disorganization. Before we go to the fire and while we're at the fire, right now, we are very good. We are. We've got a very cohesive group, we're trained, and we are a bargain. If we don't like the chief later on down the line, and they're not going to do anything about it, we may all leave.
Thank you. Unless somebody else has something new to offer, I'd want to put this to vote. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mike Lawless, 9 Governor's Road. I'm currently the EMS officer for the Groveland Fire Department. I have a letter that I've been hanging on to since 2011, and I believe there's a time and a place for everything. I think now is a time and a place to explain what this letter is all about. It was written by Chief Camillowicz in 2011, under pressure from the Board of Selectmen at the time. Now, keep in mind, we had a Board of Engineers and we had a weak chief. Under the pressure of the Board of Selectmen, it was restricted on the fire department end on what medical calls the fire department could go to. It took me and Chief Lay and some other people approximately five years to straighten that mess out. We are now finally going to all medical calls, and I'm glad for it. I'm very passionate about the people of Groveland and what care they receive, but at the time, the Board of Selectmen had the power to push the police chief into making him dispatch us to only the calls he felt necessary.
Further discussion? Anything new? Just hang on for a second.
Hi, my name is Rockdower. I live at 107 School Street. I was fire chief in West Newbury for about 20 years. I was on the department there for 47. I was on the Board of Fire Engineers, so I'm one of the ones that started this, from the engineers. We, I talked to the engineers about voting out our jobs to go with a strong chief. In West Newbury, the, you know, games were played. Some years, I had three members of the Board of Engineers. I wound up one year because everybody wanted to get on the Selectmen, put seven members of the Board of Fire Engineers. I had four deputy fire chiefs in West Newbury, like, I needed that. And, and it was tough. So it was my suggestion to go to a strong chief. It has been contentious at times between Chief Lay and the Board of Selectmen. It's been contentious sometimes between Chief Lay and myself, and we've argued about different things. I have a way of doing things, he has a way of doing things. But when I look at it, I, I, I think the, the chief has to run his department. I would have loved to have been a strong chief, you know, that I could set precedent, but I had to go to a, I had to keep going to the Board of Fire Engineers. That Fire Engineers is back to the revolutionary days when they were called fire wards, you know? Everybody had to keep a bucket in their house and everything else in case they went out. So I'm just saying that even though it can be contentious at times, there are ways to work together with this process of being a strong chief so he can run his department and get the support he needs to go forward. Thank you.
Down here, anything new?
You know, if you go back to the weaks chief, it just doesn't make the chief like, you know, a weakling. You know, we still have a, a contract process and the Board of Selectmen could still engage in hiring a chief for two years or three years or five years for that matter. So you, you need some fallback position in case it doesn't work out. And tenure, folks, is not the issue. That, that's the fatal flaw in the statute in my mind, tenure.
Anything new? Chief?
All day long. So Dan says tenure like it's a dirty word, and I, and I guess that it can be. But I think everybody really needs to understand, if you're ever hired and managed people and, and evaluated people, you, you, probably in your own jobs, you have a good set of expectations to work by, you probably have goals and objectives, you probably get an appraisal, you probably get all those things. You might even have an, an agreement to work by. I have none of those things. I have no contract, I have no goals and objectives, I have no expectations. All I have is a budget that's run flat, my calls are up 10% year over year over year. I took this job and I said, you can run the tape, we all like to say that, "I give you more for the same." And you're getting a whole lot more for the same. You look, you look over here, all these people are certified firefighters three years ago. We had like a handful, okay? We're getting it done, it's under my leadership that it's getting done. So to think that this doesn't affect me is, is foolish. This is a little bit about me, because you could get a second legal opinion that says, "Hey, guess what? We can get rid of him." So this is about me, it's about, if it's not about me, it's about telling me who my second-in-command is, who my captains are, who my lieutenants are. I don't know, these guys might be friends with one of these guys, I don't know. So, you know, I make a decision, they don't like it, guess what the grievance process is? I'm going to the Selectmen. Okay? Today, they come to me. I, I run the place, I don't run it with an iron fist. It's not autocratic, it's not any of that. I have regular, scheduled, monthly meetings with my officer team. We do everything together, we build consensus, we reach consensus, we run it like you would expect a business to be run. And it's done on time, on budget, all the time, okay? So this, if you're afraid of the future, hey, give me a couple of more years, see what you get. In three years, when I, it'd be a surprise when I turn 65 too. In three years, when I turn 65 and I must retire, if you think you need a weak chief then, maybe you want to consider it then, but at this point, it's a foolish idea. It really is. Thank you.
All right. Yell it out. Yeah, go ahead.
Everybody's spoken for the, for strong chief. I don't know if I want a strong chief or a weak chief, but what I can tell you is that the Boy Scouts had an Eagle Scout who did a project, raised funds, built a park, did all this stuff by himself with the help of his troop members, put in a grill, and the strong chief was allowed to pull it out without any authorization. When we went to the Board of Selectmen, they said, "Well, I'm sorry, we have no control over the chief." This was not the type of environment we were expecting. So there is an opposition to a weak chief or to a strong chief, is that he does have full autonomy over certain things in this community. A young man spent his six months building this park, raising the funds, and then one person took that down.
Go ahead.
I just speak to that. That, that doesn't come from a strong chief or a weak chief, just to explain to you. That comes from authority through the State Fire Marshal and the fire code, and it, and it's in the fire code. We have to enforce the fire code. It's a new fire code, so.
Folks, hey, you know, again.
No, it's, it was the burning of the debris. You can't burn debris. And it's, it's a fire code thing, so I'm just saying, that doesn't change under a weak chief or a strong chief. That's a authority through the State Fire Marshal.
Anything new to add? All right, one, one more new thing here.
Just want to remind folks that the standard for cause is an unbelievable standard. It's very difficult to remove anyone from cause. I also want to remind everyone that as this statement was prepared by this Board, we're looking forward, we're looking ahead for this town. This town deserves to retain appointing authority and pay scale setting authority, just like we do with all other departments. We do not approve whether or not the police chief needs to pursue a crime scene. We don't get involved in that. It's just the overriding authority of setting the pay and approving the hires. It's real simple. It's nothing to do with this chief. We're looking forward. And if we don't look, we're fine. I'm glad to hear that there isn't retaliation, but we have a law that could incubate it a lot easier. We have no concern that it's happening. Perhaps some of my members do, I don't. But the point is, we have a law that is wrong for this town. We want appointing authority for you. This is for our appointing authority, just like we have throughout the entire town. Thank you.
All right, somebody new over here? Go ahead.
Erin Merrill, 14 Summer Street. I just have a quick question.
Yeah, can you pull that down? Will it, does it slide down? Can somebody?
Erin Merrill, 14 Summer Street. I guess my question is, the Board of Selectmen are pushing very hard for this to be passed now. It doesn't affect our current fire chief, who by all accounts is here for three more years. Unless there's some reason that this needs to be addressed right this moment, why is it such a big push for you guys when in three years it can be done again? Because this can come back on the warrant next year, and the year after, and the year after that. Is there a reason why this needs to be pushed so hard right now for something that does not affect the current fire chief, who technically has three years?
I think they said they were thinking forward, but if somebody wants to respond to that.
I'll reiterate briefly. It's an autocratic system and it is, because I don't believe in autocracy, I believe in a democratic process.
Okay.
I don't condone the statute for one minute, let alone another three years. Thank you.
One, one last thing, Mr. Moderator, just to answer that, that one issue about setting the pay. You set our pay. You set our pay. It's in our budget. So for them to keep on saying that we set our own pay, or the fire chief sets our pay, it's not true. It comes through our budget, it gets approved at town meeting, and then we get paid. We just got the 2%, I believe, that everyone else had, which is, thank you very much. But the other issue is, we talked about cause a little bit. We can't remove them without cause, but what the weak chief says is you can remove them without any cause. Just because they don't want us in the position, they can send us away and not reappoint us without cause, without an explanation. So there's a flip side of every coin. Just keep that in mind. Thank you.
All right, somebody said to move the question. So, Article 31, we have a motion for favorable action, a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
It's not passed, majority. All right, folks, we got, we have just a little more business to get done here. Article 32, is that being withdrawn? Is that what I was told? Folks, just hang on for two more minutes and we're out of here. Planning Board, where's the? Where? We have a motion from the Planning Board to table this article. All in favor of tabling Article 32, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion, article is tabled. Do we have a motion dissolved? Is that what I just heard? A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous.